All right, Mr. Chairman, we are on the air.
All right. I hereby call the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting of March 1st, 2022 to order at 7:32. All right, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier-News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures: any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 p.m. at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, there is also, and we failed to put our little phone announcement in here. If anybody has their phone on, please put it on mute or shut it off so it doesn't ring, and it may or may not interfere with the recording system, but at least not have it ring, or shut it off.
I'll put that in the agenda for next meeting.
Pledge of allegiance. Brian?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Aronio is excused this evening. Mr. Giannakas is currently absent. Mr. Grosskopf is excused this evening. Mr. Hane?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Lindemann?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Vice Chairman Johnson?
Here.
Chairman, correct?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Giannakas?
All right, he's here. All right, I knew he wouldn't let us down.
Well, you know, it's hard to...
He almost sat in front of the computer, I know. Okay, so we have, our first order of business is to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2022. Do we have any changes or corrections to the zoning board of adjustment minutes of the regular meeting and hearing on February 15th, 2022?
No.
Okay. The only people that aren't qualified to vote on it is Tom Grosskopf, Scott Hane, and Jonathan Rosenberg because they weren't here. So do I hear a motion from those that are present and able to vote on it? Do I hear a motion to move the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Minutes are moved. All right. Now, the zoning board annual report discussion. We have before us a very well-done annual report, two of them. We have an older one of 218, 220, done very nicely by Liz Laney, and we have our new one, 2021, and we have comments by both the planner and the attorney and the engineer, I'm sorry, not the attorney. Oh, you can make comments too if you want. But, so, has everybody had a chance to look at the 2018, 2021 and compare them to the 2021 one? Because I did that, and it was mostly similar, some changes. What I wanted to ask you, Liz, is why did, other than just make it different, why did you leave out the rest of the underside lot paragraph, just because you didn't want to repeat it?
No, one of the reasons was I, last year I had...
Liz, I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? Thanks. We're not on Zoom anymore.
No.
Right, right, yeah, you gotta talk into the microphone.
Okay, one of the reasons was because last year I had called out specifically the properties that we had looked at, and I didn't do that this year, I can, if you'd like.
Well, you know, also, you may want to just leave in, these existing nonconformities often led to homeowners requiring variances, setbacks. You might want to put that back in because that is really, that's still relevant. You can leave out the specific references to different properties, but I think that we should still make that an issue because it's still causing people all kind of headaches that they want to come before us. Anybody have the comments on the underside lot paragraph?
I have a question about...
Yes.
Is this on? This thing on? You put, I guess it's the second to last sentence, none of the applications were for teardowns, so I haven't had enough time to actually review what was done in 2018 to 2020, but is there a difference when people are tearing down something versus just wanting to put on a shed dormer?
Well, I think the point that I was trying to make was that...
I see teardowns in the other one, by the way, now.
No, no, but, yes, what the point was, and it was from last year, was, let's say in a certain street, you're requiring 20,000 square feet, but none of the lots make...
Ever made it.
Ever made it. They're all 8,000 square feet, let's just say.
Or half, 10,000.
Or half. And so, the idea was, well, maybe that zoning is in place, I don't know, to encourage people to buy two lots, tear down what's there, and build bigger homes.
But that ain't happening.
But that's not what's happening.
This isn't necessarily punitive for somebody who may want to tear down a house, is it?
No, 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 no. It was more just trying to understand why perhaps the lots, the minimum lot sizes in certain areas was so much larger than any of the lots in the zone.
Than reality.
Oh, well, that's the planning board's fault, isn't it?
Right, well, that's...
Right.
Say it over loud, I didn't hear you. But, um...
Is this on?
No, yeah. But no, the point is, Gary, is that we were trying to recommend that perhaps the wishful thinking ordinance should not be what they're doing. It shouldn't be like, let's hope that some rich developer comes in, buys the whole street, knocks everything down, and makes it conforming. Get in, from what we've seen, that's not happening. And all that's happening is, it's making people come in and get, spend money to get variances to go up because they're increasing the amount that's closer to the side yard because the side yard no longer conforms, because even though the house was built that way, you know...
Wouldn't some of the floor area ratio stuff kind of control?
No, yeah.
Well, they wind up having to get variances for just about everything.
Everything, right.
And one of the, you know, it's punitive for people who may live in smaller homes, it may be starter homes, and so...
50 by 100 lots, I didn't buy...
And, you know, they may, I'm making huge assumptions, but let's say they don't have the money to, you know, that we're making something very costly to add a deck when that it shouldn't necessarily be so costly.
Or to pop the roof line up, or to do something like, you know, to build out the back of their house. Well, the biggest culprit is that, is Sterling. I mean, we've had, on the one street in Sterling, we've had almost every house on that street coming for us because they're putting an addition for grandma, they're putting addition for uncle, they're putting something on that house, the deck. They're doing something to that house which automatically requires the variance because they have a 10-foot setback and it's a 20-foot setback from the side yard. It'll never be 20 feet, unless, like I said, you knock down every house and we build them. So, I understand the mentality is, we want to make the area better, so we want to plan for the future, but the future may not ever come, is what we're saying. It may never be that. So, sometimes you just gotta say, okay, these people have suffered enough, let's make the zoning what it actually is, and if they do something beyond that, they have to get a variance.
Yeah. So, to understand the process here, we look at this, these are, you know, this is a summary, this is an annual report. At what point do these become, you know, law?
No, that's not the point. Our reason for doing this is to show the planning board who is in charge of the ordinances and the master plan that all, some of the issues that we're facing.
Okay.
And by explaining to them that maybe if they did certain things, it would take some of these issues away and make it harder, easier for the general public to do things with their property that now they have to come before us every time to do it.
Right.
And maybe clear up, like, you'll see further on, clear up the issues about definitions, and what's this and what's that. Because we see it as a variance grantor, that we have issues that people say, well, I'm stuck because I got a piece of property that, you know, in one hand it tells me this is the front yard, the other hand tells me this is the side yard, but this is the front yard, and, you know, like, we should address that. We're telling the planning board to say, fix it, you know, come up with a fix, word it right so that when people come here, they know, at least know what part of their house is the front, is it front, so...
And nobody told them to fix it back in 2018 to 2020?
No, we've told them then too, but they don't, they haven't, let me put it this way. It's a, it's a long process. I don't envy them. They have to, you know, reconstitute whatever they do with the master plan, start looking at that again and our ordinances, and we try to give them guidance into what we see and to what we've experienced, so maybe they can fix certain wordings, clarify certain definitions, fix certain contradictions, like you'll see with the fence. So there's things that we show them that we've encountered that we say, try to fix it.
Okay.
And they don't always get to it right away, but if it comes up every year, we tell them, it's still happening, it's still coming up, there's still an issue. It hasn't not gone away yet. There has been no resolution of that. People are still having that issue when they come before us. So maybe you should look at it again. You know, it's...
On top of the other ones.
Yeah, right. I mean, if we have to keep telling them every year because it's an issue, we'll tell them. If the issue goes away, we will tell them, but it only doesn't go away. But...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, do we know or not know whether they even considered, like, did they reject any of these things? Do we know for a fact that they may or may not have said yes or no to these, to doing these things, or not taking them up?
No, we don't. No, I think there's been a little bit of a stagnation on the part of the ordinance review committee.
Okay. So the odds are they haven't even considered these things?
I don't think a lot of it isn't even considered, and to be honest with you, it's just been the state of affairs lately.
Obviously, yeah, yeah.
You know, hopefully, starting this year, that'll be, we energized and we done, and hopefully they'll start looking at this stuff again. Because when they were in full force, things were addressed and things were fixed along the way, so. And that's what our experts are here, sitting here, because they'll help them fix it, you know, they'll help them reword it. But, corner lots, here's another one. Another issue noted last year relates to corner lots. So we have, "All yards facing our public street shall be considered front yards and shall conform to a minimum front yard requirements." Well, some people have a corner lot, so which is their front yard? I mean, is it, is it...
Well, they have the two front yards, but the issue is, what are the other two yards?
Right, what are the, are they side yards, are they backyard?
Right.
Like, what's your backyard?
And traditionally, I mean, what I had, the former planner had always considered the other two yards, side yards.
Right.
But it's not clear, it doesn't say that in the ordinance.
It doesn't clear, right. And maybe by considering it a side yard, you're making it hindrance to them because the backyard has different setbacks. Side yard has different setbacks. So, you know, I say if they have a swing set, then it's the backyard, but, you know, you don't know how to define it. So, they should look at it and say, okay, corner lots, this is the definition, this, a backyard would be this, and a side yard would be that. Because it's not fair to that person who has a corner lot not to have a backyard, by definition.
Sure, they might be able to figure out where the front door is of the house and say, the yard might be on the other side.
Maybe, that, right, whatever the way of defining it, because a backyard has different setbacks and different parameters.
Yeah.
And maybe by, maybe they want to put a swimming pool in what is now a side yard, but it really should be a backyard. So, you know, that's the issue.
And the other issue is not just for the applicants, but also for their neighbors because, let's say the side lot, let's say it's 10 feet, but a rear is 25, and now they have a patio and a barbecue and everything.
And it's 10 feet.
And it's only 10 feet, and they only have to have 10 feet.
So maybe it's too close to the neighbor.
Yes, it might now be too close to the neighbor, yeah.
Right. So maybe it's allowing them to put it too close to the border.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we go back to the undersized lot discussion?
Sure.
Is this, and this might be a question for our planner, but is the suggestion to look at this based on neighborhood or as a whole for the community?
Well, I think certain neighborhoods, it's more of a problem than not, but I think what we found is that the applications are scattered. It's not just, okay, it's only on this block in Sterling, let's say. It's all over, but there are clusters.
Clusters that are more problematic.
You know, and so, within certain areas of the municipality, there are clusters, and so I think the suggestion is more that maybe those clusters be evaluated and the standards changed just in those areas.
In certain areas, okay.
So, corner lots, is there any wording that somebody would like to have in corner lots compared to the two recommendations? I think they pretty much mirrored each other. Oh, yeah, but, yeah, now we have setbacks. It's near clear how to measure building setbacks. Is it to a deck, patio, steps, et cetera, or is it to a building wall? This remains an issue. So that's something that we still, we told them back in 2018 and 2020 that we have an issue with how, where do you put the tape measure? You know, where do you start it, where do you end it? And that makes a big difference because we had, we've had a few, you know, variances, applicants come before us, we were sitting here scratching our head. Is it from the base of the step? Is it from the front door? Is it from the stoop? Where do you measure from?
Yeah, and this was actually, initially that came up in the planning board with a subdivision where there were certain setbacks, and then the decks went into those setbacks, and it was sort of, you know, well, this may be setback 25 feet, but the deck is only five feet from my property, you know, so...
You know, do you want to consider a deck, but a step's not? I mean, is there a difference? Is there something that makes one different than the other?
Right.
I mean, you know, decks and steps can be taken down and replaced, but most of the time decks usually are permanent, unless they rot away and fall down. But, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, like I said, this is stuff, this is meant to tell the planning board when they're doing their ordinances view, what issues we've encountered and things, issues they should look at, and perhaps define, set a standard for, so that the next time we get a similar application, we're not sitting here trying to figure out where to judge the setback from, which is, you know, I think it's fair to us and the applicant because we really don't know. A lot of times, Liz, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there a, is there like a general understanding from other communities or in certain wording in the state that would define setbacks, or is that just by community?
It's by community generally. Some people say, oh, it's anything with a roof, so if it's a porch, then that counts as a building, but if it's a deck, it doesn't.
Okay.
But...
What if you put a lattice roof on your deck?
Yeah. But if, but it really depends on, and, you know, it's up to the municipality.
But I mean, in your experience and your knowledge of different communities, because you've worked for different people, what is the, is there a norm? Is there a, is there some sort of usual definition that people go wrong?
I prefer to the steps of a deck, just because I think if you're talking about what kind of impacts you're going to have on your neighbors, what happens on a deck is going to impact your neighbors.
Oh, of course. But what about a front stoop that's just consists of railing?
It's the same, yeah. I would say the same. It would be to the steps of the stoop.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. Well, I mean, that's the kind of thing you could tell the planning board, but, you know, I mean, that's the kind of thing that, I guess it would depend on the intrusion of it or the presence of it, or what, you know, what it does.
Yeah.
But, all right.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the Uniform Construction Code might have a definition for how they consider a structure.
A structure.
To do with how it's affixed to the building.
Or how it's affixed to the ground, maybe?
Correct. Again, Uniform Construction Code isn't zoning.
No.
So we don't, we can't...
But that's a definite issue we could help.
That might be something that we can look at to apply to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. Because if they don't consider it something a structure because of the way it's built or set up, then maybe we shouldn't consider the setback from that thing.
Correct. That's kind of what I'm thinking along the lines of.
But conversely, what is the purpose of a setback, right? What's the reason for it?
Not to infringe upon your neighbor.
Exactly. And so I think when you look at it that way, to further the purpose of the setback, you would go with what...
Oh, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but at the same time, that's not the only thing we see that is protruding. Sometimes there's other things that aren't so, doesn't have such a magnitude to it. You know, we, I can't think right now, but there are other things besides steps and decks. There's...
Well, your garbage can enclosure.
Yeah, or just a patio, or just a little, you know, landing or patio or something. Should that be considered in the setback? Because that really, you can't see it, it's ground level, it doesn't have anything else to it. So that's the kind of thing that, you know, we, you know, how do you define it, you know, and, you know, maybe you do want it, you know, you want to consider that a structure or not. You know, that's the kind of stuff that we need, we need clarification. However which way it goes, if it's clarified, we don't have to make that call. We don't have to sit here and toss a coin to say, oh, yeah, it's a structure, we're gonna, you know, measure from that point. You know, it's easier for us if things are clear. I mean, especially when you're given variances, because it gets very touchy. You know, do you need a variance? Is it, you know, because attorneys for the applicants will argue, but I don't think that we need a variance because the, you know, the building is 25 feet, but we're just putting a little stoop out there to landing or something, and that shouldn't be measured. So, if they're arguing that and we don't have a definition of it, it's tough for us to say no or yes, you know. That's the kind of thing that, you know, because attorneys don't want a lot of variances. So they'll try to say, well, the building's conforming, and all we're doing is putting a four-by-four patio so they could step out of their door or something. You know, that's the kind of thing.
One example, this actually was something with the Elite application that was before the planning board, is that they had a roof overhang. So initially, they had measured the setback to their building face, and I think Rich Keller said, you know, no, actually you should go to the roof overhang. So, you know, and they were, that was sort of...
What was underneath the roof overhang?
It was nothing.
Nothing.
It was just kind of stylistic.
Oh.
But I think he was right, but it was not clear in the ordinance.
Well, if he, he may be right, he may not be, but at least if it says, you measure it from there, right or wrong, that's where you measure it from.
Right, right.
If you say if it's a building overhang and it's not, it's not overhanging a patio or a deck, it's not, you know, they, whatever, I, personally, I don't care. It's just as long as it's defined.
Right.
You know, because we just want to know where to measure from.
Right.
Okay. Building height, that's always a good one. We got the, you can, our members at the board see, regarding building height, I also note that there was a question as to whether the measurement for building height should be taken at grade before or after construction, but there's also, isn't there the issue, because some municipalities do average grade along the foundation?
Yeah.
And some do, we do the lowest point.
Correct.
Which...
Much more conservative.
May be a detriment to the person building because we don't exactly live on the plains here. And you could build a house, and you could have one little corner where the property, where the, you know, it's lower, and you're screwed because your whole house is now not conforming.
Correct. And any house that has a walkout basement is going to need a height variance, essentially.
Yes, right. You know, we've grappled with that quite a bit. I mean, we've said, well, if three-quarters of the house is surrounded, and it's only the back, and it's only a door, you know, we're not gonna, so, you know, we've had to, like, shoehorn that. It would be nice if we had some clarification of, and maybe fixing it to say it is, and it is the average height, or the average of the, of the, you know, perimeter of the house, because I think that would have set, that would have made a few people more, you know, less, 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 more compliant and less, nonconforming. And I don't think it would hurt. I mean, what would it hurt, really? I mean, you're only talking a few feet anyway, usually, right? But, now we have...
Is building height only by height and not by stories? Because we always have that kind of conversation.
Well, we have, right, we have, we have this...
35 feet or two.
Right, or two and a half stories or something like that, but...
But with variances, it matters because if it's, if you get a variance for number of stories, it's a C variance, and if you get a variance for feet, that's like, you know, can be a C or a D.
Right.
And a D is more difficult, you know?
Right, right. So it does matter.
Three and a half feet, right? It's 38 and a half or more would require a D variance.
Right. And if you're not, if you're taking it from the lowest point of a piece of property, it may only be two feet that's lower on the side of the, and you're penalizing the whole building for that. That might be something they won't want to consider. Any other comments on that one?
Just a question, Liz. When you say the question is whether it should be taken at grade before or after construction, what, like, what's your, what's your consideration there?
Oh, so this is an issue, like, let's say somebody builds something that's really tall, but then they add fill, and then they say, oh, no, it's from, I've added fill, so the lowest point is now much higher. Whereas if you did it from what it was at the beginning of construction, it's, let's say it would be five feet lower, or something along those lines. It's sort of trying to make it clear. I think we had a...
But isn't there only a limited amount of fill they could actually even put in based upon?
It would depend on the site. It's really unique to each site, certain...
But if the fill was level, leveled to the surrounding terrain, they would be allowed to do that, right?
Yeah.
And therefore, then the building wouldn't look any bigger than it would...
I have a question of how it looks in the matter of if technically they need the variance or not.
Yeah.
I don't think, the definition doesn't specify. It's the lowest elevation around the perimeter to the peak. The lowest elevation went before any construction was done, you know, in the last 20 years.
There was an application we had, and I'm blanking on it, but it was where they needed a height variance because they had steps coming out from a basement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was the one we just had, yeah.
And they wound up adding fill, and we, it probably is going to look kind of weird, you know, in the rear, because you're going to have these sort of berms around the, around it, but...
I thought you were talking about brand-new construction.
Yeah, see, brand-new construction, they have to, they have to level it around the building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think what you're talking about is a, is a already...
Add-ons, yeah.
Already constructed building, where they're either adding a, an addition or doing something like a steps.
Right.
And then artificially putting fill in.
Right, 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 exactly.
Potentially, it needs to be defined anyway, because what you could do is, you could possibly install a retaining wall around your property.
Right.
And then fill up to the things. Now, your house is quote-unquote complying.
Is lower, right, yeah.
Because you have this retaining wall that's holding, and then you drop another five feet off the retaining wall.
Yeah.
And you're not compliant.
Right.
So that should be defined, but how far away grade needs to be in order for it to count as...
Yeah, no, no, you're right, yeah. You know, maybe...
That's something we commonly see, is you do average grade, and it's, you know, 15 feet off the foundation, or there's some...
Okay. Yeah, well, that's...
Get a little bit more of an equal balance then, avoiding people playing tricks to not get a variance.
Right. But I, but I see what you mean. That would be new construction, because new construction, you have to, you have to level it to, to the usual line of a foundation.
Right. It's sort of to try to prevent people from, you know, like, a work ground.
Jury rigging their property, yeah. Taking a load of dirt and putting it over there and saying, no, no, I'm not...
Yeah, yeah.
What's to say if there's, you know, a lot that has a dilapidated home, they bring in a couple trucks of fill, no one's done the reviser, and now they pre-screw it a little bit, and now they don't need variance anymore.
Yeah, the only, you know, I mean, that normally wouldn't be done if you have, you know, if you took out, if you couldn't do it if you had windows in your, in your foundation. If you took out your windows, yeah. I mean, you normally don't put window, dirt over a window, but yeah, you could do it in some circumstances if there were no windows or stuff. But, all right.
I, just the one thing I would change here is that, change, take out Rich Keller, and then just say you can do it with the board engineer, or...
What was that again?
I continue to agree with Rich Keller because it was, yeah.
All right, yeah, just take that out. Or you could take out...
It's a comment, we could let it go.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, well, that was a, that was a cotton paste, I know.
Yeah. No, no, yeah, no, that's fine, yes.
Fence height around pools. Now, this is an important one because there's two contradicting things here. And a private residential swimming pool shall be surrounded by, by a fence at least 54 inches, but then it says here, swimming pool area shall be enclosed with a substantial fence of not less than four feet high. Now, that may not be conflicting because not less than four feet high, it could be 45, 54 inches, so...
It will, the thing is, I think some people have come in with 48 inches and said, are we, you know, we, because they go to the swimming pool section where it says 48, or four feet.
Yeah, maybe those two sections should be made to comply with each other.
Yeah, I think they have to be consistent, yeah.
Substantial, with a substantial fence, at least 54 inches high should be in both places.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
The four feet high should be out.
Yeah.
That is, you're right, that's, that's really confusing. Because, and, and...
Have they got a variance for that recently, or they came in as a question?
They think they're being, they're compliant, because they've gone to the swimming pool section.
But according to that language, they are.
Yes, and then they don't necessarily go to the fence section that says 54.
Right, well, it's...
Yeah, consistency.
And then what do we do in that case? Because we got, we got a contradicting wording there.
What we've done is required 54 inches, yeah, yeah.
Right, but I mean, that, that's because people say, oh, okay, but there, somebody could fight us on that and-
They could, yeah.
You know, and we'd look like idiots, I mean, because we have two different-
Wasn't that UCC code, though? The height of the pool around the fence pool is dictated by the UCC code, I do, I believe.
Yeah, but we shouldn't have conflicting wording.
Right, no, I agree we shouldn't, but I'm just saying, like, in that case, if there's an issue, then we refer to the UCC code.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, I'd rather have it clear so that people don't even-
Absolutely.
Because what's happening is if people put it in their plans, and I gotta, we do their plans. And that would cost them money, and the architect should have known better, but he didn't, and, you know, this way, there's no, no question, it's fifty-four and that's it. And, and you should have known better.
Well, we have towns that, when the applicant comes in with a swimming pool, and they come in with a four-foot fence, the chair or whoever on the board will say, let's go to your catch-all variance phrase, we'll give you a variance for a taller fence because it's a pool and it's safe.
You give them a variance for a taller fence?
Taller fence around the pool.
We, we shouldn't have to give them a variance because-
I'm just saying, in some towns, they'll just give you the variance even if you don't ask for it, because they want you to have the taller fence around the pool.
Right, but we, yeah, I know. But I, I, I think the wording should be fixed because it's contradictory. So we won't have to issue that. They'll say fifty-four inches, that's it, and then it's done. And they don't have to sit there and go, okay, we, we do our plans to get signed.
Yeah.
Uh, but, which costs money. Uh, now we got wireless communication facilities, that's always a good.
And I, you know, I threw this in and I-
That was a good one.
No, I'm, and the only reason, because I was looking at what we looked at this past year.
Yeah, with ATT and T-Mobile and everything else.
And, um-
Just to go back to the fence for a second, there was the last sentence there about whether or not the backyard has to be enclosed or-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because I kind of encounter that sometimes when-
Yeah, um-
Looking at a pool and the fence isn't enclosed, but the backyard is, let's say with a fifty-four fence. Um, does another fifty-four fence-
Need to go around the pool.
Three feet from the pool have to be there, or six feet from the pool, or?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, I guess the distance to the pool should be, we'll dictate whether or not, like, if the pool is all the way up to the side yards, then that fence is good enough, but if it's not, should another fence be there?
Yeah, I mean, because like I said, there was three eighteen Mercer and there was nothing between the, the pool was sort of in the middle of the backyard and the fence-
But the backyard wasn't that big either.
Yeah, that's true, but it was, it was, I-
They were only using the one fence of the perimeter of the yard.
Right, right.
And you know something, I think that-
But I think the fence, if someone walked out of the house, they could, you know, child walks out of the house, they could fall into the pool.
It's not fenced from the back of your house.
Right, well, I guess my question is, what's, what is the purpose of the zoning ordinance?
Right.
Are you telling that someone can't walk out of their house into their pool if they want to? Or are you here to protect the neighborhood and people around it from accidentally falling into the pool?
The neighborhood from accidentally falling in.
Well, they shouldn't be going over your fifty-four foot perimeter fence.
Right, but when, but if that's the case, then a, then a fully enclosed rear yard with a fence that connects to the house meets the, would meet that intent.
Would meet it, yes, yes. Um, yeah, that's, well, that's part of the things that has to be, the discrepancy in that has to be fixed. Because it is a little bit, it's, it's, it's confusing. And that's gonna be confusing to someone who comes before us and said, do I need two fences? Do I need one fence? If I have a large backyard, do I need two fences because it's further away? Or am I only gonna get away with one fence? Um, so, you know, either way, I don't really care. It's just a question, it should be, uh, should be, it should be addressed. And that, and then when people come before us, we can say, no, you need two fences because it's, it's fifty feet away from your pool. No, you don't need two fences because it's only, you know, it's basically right around your pool. Um, let me see, section, uh, surrounded the backyard. I don't think, does the wording say that has to be, that the house can't be part of the barrier?
No, no, it was more, I, see, I don't know what the per- purpose is essentially, like, is it, you know, because-
It, it's from keeping small children, pets, and animals from going in your fence.
Well, exactly, but then those small children could be living in the house. So then in that instance, you wouldn't want the fence to be around the pool. But-
But then, do they consider the pool surrounded if one of the sides is the house that's blocking the access?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. And what is the, what, I mean, is there anything-
Definition of a pool.
Yeah.
Right, no, is there anything in the, in the building code in the state that, that would help us with that?
There, there may be, yeah.
Yeah, I think there, there definitely is, and I think again, this is probably another opportunity where we can-
Yeah, we can look through another, look-
Construction code and try and, you know, merge the two so the zoning aligns with the uniformed construction code.
Yeah.
And then again, you know, you could always have above and beyond what the UCC requires, but-
Because I, I know-
Make sure you meet that intent first and can kind of build upon it.
Yeah, I know people that have decks that go out into the pool. Some of them put the self-closing gates on the deck to keep the little kids from going down into the pool, so they don't have to worry about it. But, um, you know, that, that is something we should really look at, because you're right, does it need to go all the way around a pool even though a side of the pool is bordered by the house?
Mm-hmm.
And, and maybe, and a deck, maybe you just need different, you know, gates on the steps of the deck, you don't need a fence, you know, or, or whatever. But, uh, I'd like to know what this, what the code, other codes say about that. Thank you for bringing that up, Gary.
Okay.
For mentioning that, because I, I meant to and I forgot. Um, all right, let's go to wireless communication facilities. Uh, I like your idea of permitting it in a C-zone as a conditional use. Because most of these things are out in the, in what we consider the conservation zones, because they're out away from, because nobody wants them in their backyard literally. So they're out in the woods, and the woods are usually C-zones, so, yeah, that's probably, uh-
But it could, I mean, the ones that exist now have all gotten use variances, so you, there's no need really-
We don't know.
But, but it could, I mean, the, the other argument is if somebody's gonna come in with a whole nother tower, you might want them to have a use variance.
Well, the, the other thing to consider here, though, is, is while I understand we're talking specifically probably about the easements, the public utility easements that run through town, if you, if you permit this in a C-zone, any lot zoned for that could get some sort of deal with Horizon, hey, I'm gonna put a big tower up here and that's gonna be great. That's something that we want to consider in this town. Because there, there are unique spots in the township where because of the terrain, we have, we have self-own coverage issues. Now, if T-Mobile knows that they have an issue at a particular conservation zone lot and there happens to be a house on that which is a permitted zone, permitted use in that zone, they could go to them, say, I'd like to put this big tower in your backyard, and then-
Well, there's other things that would come into play for that.
Well, no, but not if we, if we make a part, uh, permitted use in the C-zone, it wouldn't have to come to us.
Uh, uh, well, how could we make it where it wouldn't be automatic? I mean, uh-
Well, I mean, the only other way would be that you put conditions that sort of force them to have to come to the board-
Right, it could be too close to existing structure or things like that, yeah.
There's a couple of landlocked lots-
Yeah.
Out there, uh, in between houses-
Right.
That all of a sudden, you know, cell tower, empty spot.
Yeah, but that-
They, they find out that there's an empty lot there.
Right.
And it's actually not owned by any of the, except for the township, so they come to the township, say, we want to build a tower on this lot and we want it, you know, six hundred feet tall.
True, but as Liz said, then you could say, well, it's too close to a house, it's too close to another structure.
Right.
I mean, one thing, what I've seen in other towns is they, one of the conditions is the height, and it's like so, not absurdly low, but it's like-
Twenty feet.
Yeah, it forces them to, always wind up coming to the board. But i- it's something to think about because you may just always want a cell tower company to have to come to you.
Oh, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but maybe, uh, we would at least give them the benefit of saying, it's a, it's a conditional use, but we still need you come before you for everything else that we need to do on it.
Yeah.
The actual structure, the height, the, the, whatever other accoutrements they have on it.
Yeah, I mean, the one benefit I thought would be you could have standards for landscaping and buffering- That we now just ask for and hope they'll do, but if you have it in the-
That's true, it might help enforce the buffering from certain people's backyards that don't want to look at it.
Right.
So, yes.
Anyway.
I was just gonna say, except for the PSE and G towers, you don't allow any landscaping.
No, they don't, you're right.
All right, but even around, even around the base?
Yeah, they, yeah, they're very fussy about that because they want to come in with their trucks and their, uh, heavy-duty equipment to fix stuff and they don't want anything in their way. They don't like nature.
Right.
But, uh-
It's very, yeah, community-friendly, I see.
Yeah.
But, uh, well, they, you know, I mean, it inhibits their, their functioning of, of fixing and repairing their, their equipment, which, you know. Uh, now we have the board engineers, some ways, um, about height. Um, well, it's similar, you already said, you know, that some people do it by, uh, the, the average.
Yeah, and I think the only other thing that, that my note had that we hadn't touched upon was, um, you know, the importance of actually getting height calculations.
Right, yeah.
And, um, you know, architectural plans that, you know, substantiate the calculation, so everything is, is confirmed.
Sure, we, we've quite often had engineering plans and architect plans that don't agree.
Yes, exactly.
And, and that's very confusing, you know, and they're off by feet, not just inches.
So that's, that, I think that's probably, um, you know, the, the key there also is, in addition to if, if there's any changes to the definition, you know, the enforcement of, of the calculations, the submission of all the documents and, and things to verify, um, those calculations. And of course, the field calculations once it's built.
Right, obviously, as built. Uh, explain critical areas to, to us, because, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, I'm not good at math, so, you know, what do you, what are you changing?
No problem. So I, I left these comments largely, um, Rich Keller had put these in here last year, and I, I think that a lot of the critical area comments that we talk about slope and then some flood hazard, um, items are, should still remain because there's some inconsistencies and some things that are a little bit, um, I don't want to say outdated, but, you know, for example, the critical area in this first section that we're talking about is, is the code currently regulates combined areas or any portion of a site having an average slope of fifteen percent or greater measured across ten vertical feet, you know, for any layperson, you wouldn't get involved, you know, to that level. Basically, it slopes over fifteen percent. Slopes over fifteen percent are not steep.
No.
You know, you probably all have them around your house and in your backyard. So what this does is, you know, it is, it is kicking a lot of people into this category. Maybe they, they need it, but in some cases, it, it might be, you know, unnecessary. Um, a lot of towns have moved away from fifteen percent and gone to twenty percent and greater.
Okay.
And I think I, I, on the next sheet, if you flip it over, I kind of showed you it, like a staged example that is very common as well. So less than fifteen percent, you know, anything is permitted. And then you kind of go in, in chunks after that with the different slope categories. So in, from fifteen to twenty, maybe you allow them to disturb fifty percent of those slopes on a lot, but only for certain uses and activities that are defined in the code.
Okay.
Such as between fifteen and twenty, you can grade it for a, a small patio in the rear of your house, something like that. Um, generally, thirty percent or more is strictly prohibited. That is, you know, from an engineering standpoint, even twenty-five percent, but definitely thirty percent, that is where we get concerned with, you know, sedimentation, runoff, all, all those type things and, um, you know, thirty percent is, is definitely, you, you always want to prohibit disturbance above that limit.
So what would be, how would you define that if they, if the, if the planning board would, to do the master plan and, and do this ordinance? Why, how would you suggest that they say all, when you say all activities subject to compliance with this section?
So that's, that's up for, that's, that's kind of the part of it that would have to be discussed, is what type activities, um, you know, that they're, they were-
They're allowing to have twenty-five percent of it.
Of a patio or, um-
A pair, a set of steps.
A set of steps, you know, things like that, um, because you do, you do have people that all of a sudden have to come in because they want to bump out a little bit off the side of their house. But again, fifteen percent slope away from your house is not uncommon at all. The ordinance does, um, exempt it if it's under fifteen hundred square feet? That's the line.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred, so again, if you have a really small encroachment, you're already exempt. But there are some cases, again, it, it's really this fifteen to twenty percent that, you know, from an engineering standpoint, we don't, we don't see it as that big of an issue.
Okay.
So, you know, consideration could be given to, you know, relaxing it a little bit.
Okay.
And allowing certain things or certain disturbances in those categories.
What is, anybody have questions about that?
I guess my only question is, is the concern with the, the steeper the slope, structural integrity of whatever you're putting there versus runoff to other properties because you're disturbing or creating more impervious ground? What's, what's the concern there, or all of the above? Because-
All of the above, I mean, it, it really is site-specific. It depends, you know, are you putting a, is it an existing lot and you're sticking a house in the middle of it? Or are you just clear-cutting a yard and grading it out because you want a nice flat backyard? And then you want to put in a ten-foot retaining wall and have a big steep slope after it? Um, there are, the Uniformed Construction Code does have standards for how you have to grade away from the foundation of a dwelling, so that kind of takes away, you know, as far as like from a structural standpoint. Um, and then again, there's certain things that you, you know, you can't have in certain steep slopes. For example, um, septic systems. Um, if, if your slope is over fifteen to twenty percent, you actually can't install a traditional septic system. You'd have to put in a trench system-
Right.
Which is a lot larger and more cumbersome and things like that. So there, there's definitely a lot of different considerations for, you know, why you want to regulate slopes and, and why you can look at it in different categories.
And a lot of it is water runoff.
A lot of it, of course.
You're, you're gonna make water runoff onto somebody else's property.
Right, absolutely.
And you know, um, some, some towns do prohibit certain grading within a certain distance of the property line to kind of cut back on, on the runoff potential to, to neighboring properties.
So if you have a steep slope and you're flattening it out, you're making more runoff to the neighbors, is that what you're saying?
Uh, that depends, because if you're, if you're flattening it out, you're maybe making it steeper at the end of that flattening out.
Right, so if you have like a consistent twenty percent slope of a backyard, but now you want to come out at twenty, flatten it out for, you know, a twenty-foot area to have a little backyard, and then you're going to have to catch back up with the grade, either with retaining walls or by having a, a steeper slope in that essential.
Because anything you level out, eventually it's gonna go right back, it's gonna find it, you, you, I, if you're, you're like this and you level out this, you're still, right here, you're still having that steep slope, so that's, that's-
I mean, anytime you disturb any grade, whether it's steep or not, you always have the potential to have drainage impacts on the neighbor. So regardless, honestly, of it being steep or not, you always have to look at what the potential-
And, and most people don't grade toward their house, so, you know, you know, that, yeah, well, I mean-
Oh, you can.
Right, but you don't want to either, so that's not where the water's gonna go, so.
But so, can, can you give an example, or is there something that's come before the board that falls within this fifteen to twenty percent that's been an issue? Because to me, it seems like that's in place for a good reason, and why would we disturb it?
So personally, I have only been here for three months, so I'd have to look for an example for you.
Yeah.
I can, I can give you an example.
Yeah.
Over in Millington, right by the train station, there, there, there's a building there, they're putting an addition off the back. It happens, so happens that the backyard is a mountain. And so the, their walkout second floor, and after the addition was done, became their backyard.
Right.
So they had to dig into the mountain to make a small patio area for them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they needed our variance, and we, they needed a variance from us to, to get, to dig into that mountain to create those conditions so that they could make what essentially was a-
A living area.
A hill area into an outdoor living area for them.
Hmm, okay.
And there's a lot of water calculations and drainage.
Yeah, there's a lot of houses-
Within a fifteen percent, fifteen to twenty percent?
The hill was, yeah, the hill was really, yeah.
The hill was almost like this.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a lot of houses that-
Slope was probably more than-
That's what I'm saying, that wouldn't be a fifteen to twenty percent slope, that would be more significant.
Justice would be for an example, that's, you know-
Uh, this house is, no, fifteen or more.
She, she asked me for less than fifteen.
No, fifteen to twenty percent is where she's saying that we should consider, or the planning board should consider changing-
Essentially, like relaxing.
The ordinance. But my question is, I guess, why would we do that? Or why would anybody consider doing that, especially if there's not a solid example of an issue?
Well, be, well, there are some, there was a lot of houses around here that sit on property that either their front or rear yard goes up or down, uh, quite extensively, and anything they do is gonna be within a fifteen or more slope. So we, I guess, what the engineer and planner are saying is that maybe we should have it where it's so, not such an absolute, as, because we have other methods of keeping water on your property. We can put swales at, at areas, we can do grading, we can do catch basins. So a lot of times, maybe, uh, the runoff that we're so afraid of, we can fix, and we don't have to make people jump through as big a hoop to do a little bit of work on their backyard. That's the only thing I'm thinking.
Would they have to come to us to get that kind of-
Well, they'd still have to come to us.
Plan going, yeah.
They might have to get a lot grading plan, which wouldn't have to go to the board, but the municipal engineer would, would review them from a lot grading standpoint, which kicks into the stormwater regulations and if they're having additional impervious coverage and how they mitigate those factors.
There'd still be a, 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 a fail-safe on that, that you're not gonna let people, you know, build something that is gonna dump water on their neighbor, uh, to that degree.
It's just kind of lessening the burden on, you know, potential applicants in this fifteen to twenty percent category that really doesn't, you know, present huge issues. You know, present huge issues. Again, we're we, your ordinance calls that a steep slope.
Mm-hmm.
You know, by no other definition is is fifteen percent really steep.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but like from up here, what would it, where would a fifteen, you know, like where, how far out?
That podium angle, what is that? You know, the podium like that.
Probably from the top here, not even to the ground, to like halfway up would be fifteen percent.
Oh, that's that's good. That's not a lot.
I mean, if you think about it here, it's written, it's a one foot rise for six feet, over six feet. So that's one foot over six feet.
Okay.
So if this table's probably about six feet, this spot.
But if that's your neighbor's property going down to your property, it's enough to put the water down into your property. Yeah, so.
And again, that's why it's it's can be controlled from the lot grading perspective, but you know, it's. The difference between fifteen percent and twenty from a runoff perspective is not gonna change all that much.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Alright, um.
Kind of, sorry, I just wanted.
Yeah, yeah.
I I just looked up the New Jersey law. You can with a pool either do right around the pool or your whole yard.
You can.
You can do either or.
That doesn't help.
Doesn't say if the house counts.
Not, does the house count as.
The house does.
Does the house count as a wall?
I don't know. Most people who fence in their yard though use the house.
Yeah.
It must, right.
Uh, special flood hazard area, flood hazard areas and wetland areas. What do you, what?
Uh, the special flood hazard area, this is simply just a definition, um, update based on, it's it's using outdated terms that are no longer used in the DEP regulations. Um, you know, simply it should just be up updated to be, you know, consistent with the DEP.
Okay, so that really is not, that that's just saying, update your your terminology.
Correct. That's the special flood hazard area one. The the next one's talking about the the setbacks that are required in the critical area ordinance. It's, um, that single family lot shall provide a principal building setback of at least fifty feet.
Where are you reading from? What what paragraph?
This is flood hazard areas or wetlands.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I see it, I see it, okay.
And so this is just to point out that this ordinance is more, is just as restrictive, if not more restrictive, than. The DEP regulations for disturbance in these areas. So anybody who is within twenty-five or fifty feet of a wetland or flood hazard area would be required to get a DEP permit.
Okay.
Already.
Yeah.
Which would then regulate certain disturbances and certain categories. And then they would be required to also get a variance for it.
Okay.
So they're kind of being penalized twice.
Well, in this case, I think there could be a benefit to having this in, cause if, I understand this, if you're in like, you know, downtown Sterling, right? Everything's already built up, there's probably, it's probably a hindrance, uh, you know, penalized twice per se. But if you're somewhere back, let's say by the Great Swamp, right, where everything's primarily just non-developed and just trees. If you have a lot there that you decide you wanna build a house on, that may be something the township wants to weigh in on about whether that's the appropriate place to start developing.
Well, it's an existing, single family lot that's zoned for residential.
No, but you, but in, the lots that I'm talking about are conservation zones. By by the the zone ordinance, you're allowed to put houses on the conservation zone lots. So this ordinance here, if someone decides that they wanna put a house on a flood zone in a conservation zone lot, would give us the opportunity to weigh in about whether or not that is something the township wants.
Yeah.
We weigh in, but we also still always caveat with DEP approval.
No, what I'm saying is, yes, you always need DEP approval for that to be legal construction. What I'm saying, this board could say, we're not granting you that variance because this is not a developable lot from what the township wants.
So I I think I'm following, so, but not for having the critical areas, it might not come before you because it.
Correct.
If they meet all the bulk standards, the disturbance and everything, so.
It's only the critical area.
You're looking at it as a, you know, the critical area is the only thing that is kind of keeping those lots, you, under.
Under our control.
Correct, cause there there are different flood zones in this town. Some are already developed and this would be like a, you know, quote, quote, you know, getting hit twice. But there are other parts of the township where. You could build a house that are in flood zones that could be code compliant, but it may not be what the township wants developed.
Well, it's also possible to maybe then the ordinance could specify that the, those critical. Area setbacks are only in certain zones. So if there is an area such as, you know, the downtown area that is is already developed and you're not as. As concerned about it and it is the conservation zones that you are concerned, maybe that's a way to kind of get the best of both worlds.
Possible.
Well, how would you change that line? How would you change your recommendation then?
Yeah, cause the issue is this, this ordinance section is specific to a flood zone, not a, not a, not a, not a, yeah, not a use zone.
Yeah, it would, it would need, I think, a little bit more than just a tweak to, uh, have them in the language. If that's the way that you wanted to go with it. That was just a suggestion that, you know, if it's a specific area or specific zones that you're looking at, that you're more concerned about. So this kind of ties in though to the last, last point that I have at the bottom here. Um, so in in twenty twenty-two, sometime in the next six months, I, it's supposed to be, I I believe it's May of twenty twenty-two. Um, I don't know if you're aware, but within the last, I think it was two thousand seventeen, FEMA released preliminary. New firm maps for all of Morris County. So those are the flood insurance rate maps that determine the limits, the extents of flood zones, if you need flood insurance, if you don't. Um, where those different limits are, if you're in an A zone, a B zone, an X zone. Um, so since two thousand seventeen, they've been under this process and they're finally going to adopt them this year. This has been a, been a long time coming. So as part of that, the county has put out and and it was attached to the packet is this. Ordinance for the adoption of floodplain management regulations. It's a a model ordinance that each municipality in Morris County will have to adopt. And this is to ensure that each town is, um, complying with the NFIP standards, the FEMA standards for. Development in a flood zone. Um, they reviewed a lot of the municipalities in Morris County and found that they were kind of all over the place. Um, you know, that some ordinances were not up to date, some were, you know, very restrictive. Which again, that the municipality can make the ordinance more restrictive than what's written in this template, but not less restrictive than what's written in this template. So this is just something I wanted to bring to your attention. Um, the municipal engineer would probably primarily be working on this with the council, but it would also go to the planning board. But just so you know, this is, you know, in the works and and will essentially, it it's going to be required to be adopted within six months of the, um. Issuance of what they call the letter of final determination.
And what's the timeline on that?
Um, well, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be August of last year, then it was supposed to be December of last year. And I actually spoke to the DEP. I just spoke to the DEP about it on Monday and they said it is still May of twenty twenty-two and it's been like.
Now, May of twenty twenty-two is for the letter and then they have six months for that.
Correct. So the letter is issued, then each municipality has six months to adopt the new ordinance.
Oh, so it may not be till the end of the year?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
So this might not, this may affect us next year then?
Correct.
Okay. Um, well, getting back to that issue of the flood hazard areas and wetland areas, wh- what's the board's, um, you know, uh, pleasure on that? Do you wanna, uh, recommend that the planning board looks at, looks at this or do you, or from what I understand, this may negate that or?
No, this is, this is not, um, this is specifically for the flood hazard areas, not what your ordinance defines as a critical area.
Oh, okay, alright.
And critical area setbacks. You, you'll still be able to keep your critical area definition and setbacks. Um, this will stand separate from that. It it's basically a more strict interpretation of the model ordinance though.
Okay. Well, do we want, do we wanna have the planning board look at? That, are we happy with the wording of, like you said, maybe it's better that it stays that way because then we have the, uh. Ability to control anything near a critical area.
Right, well, thi- this particular code section is, I mean, the ordinance section is is related only to setbacks from critical areas, right? Of which, of which flood is one of many.
Right, there's, yeah, floods, uh, flood hazard areas, wetland areas and steep slope areas. I should note though that it's, it does only define wetland areas, not wetland transition areas. So each DEP regulated wetland area also has a buffer associated with it called the transition area, and that's either fifty feet in width. Around the wetland area or a hundred and fifty feet within. So, um, but the critical area definition does not include transition areas, just the actual wetland itself.
What is it that makes it fifty feet versus a hundred and fifty feet?
That's an interesting question. Um, you actually have to apply to the DEP to make that determination and it has a lot to do with the type of vegetation and animals that are.
The extensiveness of the area.
Yeah, essentially because you'll have some wetland pockets that exist. Um, you know, probably off a valley road behind some of the commercial facilities over there, probably in the rear, there's a wetland pocket. And then within fifty or a hundred and fifty feet of that is probably a building or a parking lot. In those cases, most of the time the wetland buffer is probably fifty feet because it's, it's not an actual valuable area. But then you can go back and probably some of the conservation zones, find wetlands pockets that within a hundred and fifty feet have all types of ecosystems. Those are what they wanna, you know, preserve.
Right.
And things like that.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, from from my take on this, I I think it it's it's appropriate to leave it as is simply because the the, it gives. Being that the township is is designed, the master plan and and it has a, wants the township to embrace a semi-rural, uh.
Atmosphere.
Atmosphere, right. So the DEP could have requirements that would be compliant for them, that would exceed what this township wants, just wants to. Wants the open space to look like from our, you know, um, you know, more more natural type areas. So. I think it, I think it's it's good to leave it the way it is just for the fact that it can come before the board and we can make a determination if if it's something. So specific that we can grant relief for or not.
No, I agree with you. I think that maybe.
I agree with that too.
Yeah, I I think maybe we should just.
Yep.
Not not mention that at all.
And the thing is too, it's some of the applications that might come in, it it might be a quick hearing, you might say, oh, you know, this is, this is no issue. This isn't the type of thing that we're really.
But at least we get to look at it.
But if one comes in that you do, then, you know, you've you've made the right decision because you have it before you and you're able to.
No, I I think that's very important, yeah. Um, okay, um, I think we've discussed it all. Uh, what's the, um, uh. Is there anything, I know, uh, you know, most of us have been here for all these, uh, uh, twenty twenty-one year end summaries that we have. Uh, and a lot of what the comments were, may have been triggered by some of these applications. Is there anything, after looking at the list of applications, is there anything that makes one of our members or any of the members wanna comment on and say. That, uh, you know, if we, if we had a change or we had some issue, that they had some issue. That they remember with the wording of some ordinance or the wording of something. Uh, is there anything that comes to mind after looking at this list?
Mr. Chairman, I I have two that I that it comes to mind. Uh, one, I don't, and this was a while ago, but I just don't know if we've, um, if we've incorporated it or not. Have we defined what a sign is by ordinance?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yes.
That that became a big thing about electronic signs, what it was.
Right, the Exxon station.
And a lighted sign.
An alighted sign.
Is the loop oil a lighted sign or is that just a light across?
A canopy with a light on it that's red and 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 marketing, is that a sign?
The corporate colors, is that a sign? Right.
Is the the Valero gas station's awning a sign?
A sign.
Or is it just printed in one area and the rest is awning?
Right. Yeah, we had that as a, we had given that as a condition, as as a, uh, as a, uh, discussion point to the, to the planning board. And I don't believe that has ever been addressed. Do you, Deborah?
Not yet.
Not yet. So.
So did the Valero station just kinda do what they wanted to do anyway, as in the past?
Yeah, I guess so.
Oh.
Uh, but, uh, did we have anything in signs on the twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, we, it's in our comments at the back, the last time out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, okay. Um. Which, are the, I'm talking of the twenty eighteen, twenty.
Yeah, it was the last thing on the.
Last thing, okay, alright.
For the synopsis.
Synopsis, right, 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 okay. Uh.
So we should include it again this year?
Yeah, we should include that thing on signs too, yeah. Because, uh, in fact, look back at some of the variances that we gave for Exxon and and those gas stations because. It, we were sitting here really perplexed as to. What a sign actually constitutes because we were told by the people that that's their corporate colors, that's their symbol, that's their. Trademark type thing, those colors and that design. And does that make it a sign or is that just making a lighted, uh, uh, cover for the gas? You know, and and if it's a sign, then it's, then they need a variance because it's too big or, you know, it it's too high or it's lit from inside, it's not supposed to be. Cause the sign ordinance says it's supposed to be externally and not internally lit. Uh, and then also, what's the definition of internally lit? Because we were looking at LED signs that the the gas prices, is that an internally lit sign or is that just something that is, you know, what? Yeah, is that just the normal, the, you know, the letters? Does that constitute, does that, is that, should that be addressed? Because when the ordinance was originally thought of, I don't think those fancy signs were even invented.
Yeah, there there's something about electronic message sign, about whether the numbers were a message and, cause I think electronic message is prohibited by the township.
Right, yeah, and was, were, you know, is it, should it be an exception if it's just a price? Is that a message? You know, a- as opposed to the scrolling one that you see, that you read, or the ones that are, yeah, at Watch on Hills or, you know, that 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 you can change digitally. Uh, yeah, you know, what is, what's, you know, do, should gas stations be allowed to have price signs that would normally. Maybe considered a message sign, but yet they're only using it for for price. You know, and maybe it can't be a message on there. Maybe they can only restricted to have a price numbers.
Yeah.
But, uh, I I don't, I've never seen the control panel for those. I don't know if they could tell you, you know, if they could put up words on those or not, if they wanted to, I don't know. But, um, you know, eh, most of those signs, I know that the one over here, the Delta, they had to take the stupid thing now because it never worked. So they finally had to put up a traditional one because they couldn't get the thing to work. It would never work right. So, you know, maybe technology has not really, you know, progressed to that point. But I know the Exxon station was a real perplexor because of all the colors and the shapes and the positionings of things. Um.
Most ordinance had, most ordinances have a separate section for gas station signs.
The the problem, the problem is gas stations are prohibited in this township.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't want anybody to get gas in this town.
But we have four of them.
We have four at least.
Well, we used to have more. I mean, we've actually cut back.
Also the ordinance, uh, yeah.
Uh, well, that's one of the reasons why, uh, Cumberland Farms moved out because they used to be on Division. And they they had a corporate mandate that said they wanted stores with gas stations.
Yeah.
Well, they couldn't put a gas station on Division Avenue, it was too small and they have a house next to them. So they just gave it up. So. Uh, and there used to be, uh, you know, Long Hill Auto was a gas station at one point, it was Phillips sixty-six. Couldn't have that there now. But we've actually cut back on our gas stations because of just, you know, where they located. But, um, uh. You know, I think even though it's a restricted use and they get a variance for use, it's the the signage. Definition should still give us guidance so that we're not sitting there trying to apply regular sign ordinances to a gas station, which don't really fit. I mean, they don't, they don't go. I mean, uh, there's, there's a little difference there. Um, but that that's something, yeah, good, good point. Signs are a problem. Uh.
Does the town have any ordinances or prohibitions on billboards? Cause that's the one that.
On what boards?
Billboards.
Billboards. Yeah, I don't, we used to have billboards in the middle of Main Street, you know, there used to be two billboards.
I have seen a lot of billboard applications in the last couple of years.
Uh, yeah, we, you haven't, I I don't know, but we haven't had any, so I don't know.
Just so maybe some, I'll, I'll take a look at and see if there's anything on that.
Yeah.
They're prohibited.
They are prohibited, okay.
They're prohibited, see?
Any, so there's another example of if somebody wanted to come in under a use variance and put one in, you have no, you know, guidelines on LED versus what?
We tell them, no, you can't have it, it's prohibited, we don't want. So, believe me, if you wanna see pitchforks and and torches, wait, wait for that.
Oh, believe me, I do.
Uh, cause, uh, you know, uh, that that would not go over too quick. Um.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, we have, um, I think it came up a a couple of times, uh, the ordinance required, there. Lots have come to us that requested variance relief for certain improvements on under, existing undersized lots. But my understanding is that there is ordinance already that allows for certain relief under a certain percentage of extension. That if you're, as long as you're underneath those, that that amount, you're permitted to to do what you're doing without coming from the board. So.
Right.
I would suggest maybe if if there is ambiguity about what that means, I would suggest perhaps the planning board take a look at that and and make that clear so that.
To that exception, right.
Correct, so that we perhaps could limit the number of people that have to come through us for those undersized lots that wanna.
That would normally just go to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, construction office and get a permit.
Yeah.
Uh.
I I don't, I don't remember the zoning number.
It's, it's, uh, excuse me, it's one thirty-six point two.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, uh, look at that and and clarify the, uh, the application of that. So we don't have, like you said, to help other, to help people not have to, uh, un, the minimus. Uh, items not have to come before us.
Who's the gatekeeper on whether they come here or not? Deborah. So tell her what the rules are.
No, 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 no. That, that's not the point. If it's, if it's, if it's ambiguity, she sends it to us because you can't, if you have ambiguity, you can't, you can't do it.
Yeah.
So the whole point of not, of eliminating the ambiguity is make her job easier. So she can.
Trust me, when I have questions, I go to them first. If if they're in agreement with me that it's an iffy scenario, it comes to you.
Comes to us, yeah. You can't have it any other way because if, eh, God forbid, you give somebody the the right to do something and then you have the public sue you over it because you misinterpreted it or you. You didn't apply it right, then we're right back, we spend all that legal money and we're right back where we started from here. So, you know, it's, it's.
And you have to establish consistency.
Yeah.
So even it's, if it's a de minimis thing like we just approved for thirty-five Morris Town Avenue, it, you know, it, if it's de min, it's still gotta come.
Yeah.
Well, what what I would suggest then is if, for consistency's point of view, if there is relief that the township intends, that perhaps it would be worthwhile to have a new ordinance section adopt it.
Right.
That, that whatever one we're talking about gets stripped from the, from it and it's replaced by something else that's either more clear or whatnot, and then there's no more precedent to to. And then there's no more precedent to, to set this out back against because it's a new adopted ordinance.
Right. Well, I, I know that's what you're saying and that's what I suggest, that they make it clear so she's not sitting there going, well, it was ambiguity, gotta send it to the board. You know, make it so that we don't have that ambiguity and somebody will say, yeah, you follow within that, that exception, you can do it, here's your, here's your building permit, let me see your plans. And, uh, you know, eh, part of what we're doing is trying to make our, our job easier by not having the little nitpicking ones come before us that, that, that will just say, well, you know, it'll take us a half hour to give you your variance, but it cost you all this money to do the plans and have your expert or whoever you're having testify before us. When in reality, if the ordinance was a little clearer, it would have just cost you money to get your permit. So, you know, that's why we have to really, that's why we're looking to clear these things up. Because we don't want people to have to unnecessarily come before us if they don't really need to. Uh, you know, our, our job should be to fix the big stuff and not the little ones, but. Um, anything else? That was a good point, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I think, and I don't know if this was an issue, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was issue we had with one of the recent ones regarding parking and what, like it was on-street parking and whether that could be defined as to meet their requirement for the amount of, number of parking spots they needed.
Was that main avenue, maybe?
And I thought that we had some confusion as to what we were considering and what we weren't considering, or was that?
No, well, what, what, um, the, uh, that, if I'm thinking, if we're thinking of the same application. The issue was the zoning, um, permits a huge reduction in the required off-street parking. Uh, and so when the applicant came in, they said we need a variance for parking, they actually didn't. But they weren't, uh, trying to say, oh, we have spaces in front and those should count. They weren't doing that. Um, but I, eh, is that the one you're thinking of?
I think so, yeah. I know there was, there was some confusion at the time about it, so I don't know if there's something that needs to be clarified or.
Sure, well, you could reduce by fifty percent, um, your parking requirement for the commercial part of the project. And so in the end, they didn't need any variance relief, um, because. Sorry?
Wasn't the only variance they were gonna?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 not, not by the board.
Or the board doing your whole presentation.
No, no, but the, the, there was some, eh, you know, and even their experts were kind of wrong.
So that was their own confusion as opposed to being a biggest.
Yeah, yeah, their, their experts didn't find it.
But we had, we did have the old library building on Central Avenue, we told them not to put a parking lot on their lot because it was right next to the lake, it was in a steep slope. We didn't want blacktop there. So we said, we'll let you park in the street, we'll, we'll count that. Because we did not want them to blacktop the property.
Right.
So, you know, i- in a lot of cases, you don't want them to put impervious coverage on a, on a piece of property.
Is that the old library?
Yeah, the old library. We, and then he kept having come before us to get a extension that finally we just said, don't do it. Don't worry about it. Because we don't want, we don't want it. I mean, you know, sometimes it's better not to put blacktop on property or, or whatever substance you're putting down. Uh, you know, so, but, um, uh, anything else concerning any of these applications that have come people's mind that they might want to bring up? Uh, I know there's a, it's kind of hard to remember back as far as February of last year, but, um, some of them, some of them are more memorable than others. But, uh, I think we, pretty much we've hit most of the things by just discussing what we've already talked about. Height, tall, we've hit a lot of these already, so. Oh, yes, go ahead. Come on up, Dennis. Yeah, you gotta come up, yeah. Gotta give you a microphone.
Name and address.
Name and address, telephone number.
Raise your hand.
Shoe size, whatever, come on up.
Let's go on the easy route tonight.
Yeah, go ahead, just do that one.
What?
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 On the easy route. There you go.
Has Hannah any section for it on there?
Oh, no.
No, not that one.
I know, I know, because I installed it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Dennis Sandau in Mellington. And I have listened patiently while you guys solved all the water problems with your expert knowledge.
Well, that's your job, Dennis.
With your expert knowledge of hydrology. That's a big word. But let me make a few observations if I may. First of all, with regard to the ordinance, the purpose of the ordinances is to provide certainty for all parties involved. Certainty for the township, certainty for the property owner, certainty for the neighbors. The very notion that somebody has to come to the board so that we can decide whether or not we like that just leaves me cold. It's embarrassing to hear words like that. A person who owns property should know what he can do and what he can't do with the property. Now, there may be a question that he needs a variance to do some small perturbation on the side. But to have to come to a board so that the board can decide whether or not he wants, he's allowed to build there, whether we think it's an appropriate use, can't do that. The ordinance tells him when he bought the property and while he paid his taxes, the ordinance guarantees him that he can do certain things and not do other things. It isn't a binary judgment for a board to decide at some later date whether or not we like the notion. I've heard this several times recently at both boards, uh, where we say, you know, your building looks nice, but this is the wrong place for it. Well, I'm sorry, if the ordinance permits the building with or without variances, then this is the right place for it. You may not like it there. It may not fit the neighborhood as well as we think, we, the current board members think. But nonetheless, if the ordinance permits it, then it's not a judgment call. And I'm not going to, uh, encourage any ordinance writing that sends something to the board for a judgment call. Let me give you an example of where the board is not allowed to get involved. There is right now going on in town a fifty million dollar construction project that many members of the public are opposed to and which never came before a board for permission. Why? Because the ordinance allows it. It just happens. Every, anybody know what that fifty million dollar construction project is? Do I see any hands at all?
We didn't hear about it.
Oh, you, you keep your hand down.
No, you don't count, Deborah.
Gary, what?
Is it Central Park?
No. Replacing the old erector set towers on the PSENG power line with monopoles.
Right, well, that's, that's not a problem.
It is a fifty million dollar project and it never came before a board. Why? Because it's a permitted maintenance improvement of an installation that was made prior to the zoning ordinance, so the whole damn line is grandfathered. Now, you guys may have busied yourself for three or four hearings as to whether or not you can put a cell antenna on top of one of those towers. But the towers themselves are going in because it is permitted by the ordinance and there is no reason to bring it to the board. Now, if that line had come to the board, either board, for approval, would there have been public objection? Of course. No one likes the thought of the power line running right through the middle of town, especially those ugly monopoles. But nonetheless, it's permitted by ordinance and the property owner has the right to do what the ordinance permits him to do. It's a very simple matter. The, if you want the board to not get involved in things, then you should continue to encourage certainty in the ordinances.
That's what we're doing, Danny.
Yes, I know.
That's what we're trying to do.
But I also heard the, the notion that the town should be able to decide whether or not this is an appropriate use at this place.
No, no, we meant in the context of them needing a variance for the use.
Now, Gary brought up an interesting point and that is, what is the purpose of the board? This is during the swimming pool discussion. And by my count, this board has seen two swimming pools in the past year or so. Um, a lot more swimming pools than that were installed in town during the past year, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And so, the purpose of this board is to look at those situations which are marginal, which are on the edge of what the ordinance permits. And you made a decision to, to grant variances for one reason or other. Now, maybe it's because the ordinance is written in a clumsy way with regard to fences, maybe.
No, the fence wasn't the reason. That was just that, eh, a part of the part, problem that we encompassed, we encountered when we gave the variance.
Well, yes, I would like to see the zoning board out of, out of business because everything is so certain that there are no variances required. But in fact, no matter how certain we make it, there are going to be hardship cases where an applicant, a property owner, a taxpayer wants to utilize his land and, and wants an exception from the variance. That's, that is the purpose of the zoning board. But we cannot arbitrarily take away property owners' rights by saying, we'll make that judgment when we see it. Very important. Let's talk about a few other things that you talked about. Uh, uh, there are about six hundred lots in town that are mentioned in the current master plan land use draft uh, to be rezoned to a smaller zone because of the problem of, somebody said, well, let's encourage property owners to consolidate adjacent lots to get a lot that's the appropriate size. We have, in fact, it, it, it was back in two thousand sixteen, we just haven't gotten around to nailing down the master plan yet. But there are about twelve neighborhoods, uh, of various sizes uh, where zoning down to the next smaller zone is appropriate. In fact, in one case, zoning down two steps is appropriate because the zone requirement is so large and the properties are, are so small. Uh, there's a lot more than just twelve neighborhoods. But we applied a sort of a round, uh, rough rule that says if downzoning will make an additional sixty percent of that neighborhood conforming, uh, then let's rezone the whole neighborhood. There may still be some small outliers. That will happen. That will happen in the master plan within the next year or so. And once it's in the master plan, calling for that rationalization, uh, then, um, then it'll be an ordinance in no time. Six hundred lots, six hundred residential lots is about twenty percent of our housing stock. Uh, so this is no small matter. With regard to height, if anyone here wants to write a height ordinance and defend it and defend it, please start with the question of original grade or finished grade, before or after fill. Then talk about measuring the base from the highest elevation, the lowest elevation, the highest corner, the lowest corner, all four corners, the lowest few corners, the average grade around the whole base, the average grade around fifty percent of the base. And then you will have settled on the bottom of the height equation. Then look at the top of the height equation. Is it the ridge line? Well, the last few zoning ordinances that this town has passed doesn't go to the ridge line, it goes to the midpoint of the roof. And everything from midpoint up to the ridge is extra. Steppes, cupolas, silos, antennas are all over and above the height ordinance. You want to include them in or not? So, anybody wants to write that down and come up with some certainty so you won't need to come to the board for variance? Be my guest, I would be happy to entertain it.
Isn't that what the planning board does?
Excuse me?
He's being facetious.
Oh, what he was asking us to do, you just asked us to do it.
No, 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 he's not asking us.
No, I am asking any one of you who thinks that this is not, is uncertain.
Yeah, I know, but the, the point is, Dennis, we weren't saying, we were saying just to clarify where you start at the base. And we understand that it's not as easy as we might think, but.
Is that I might think?
Yeah.
What makes you think I think it's easy?
No, uh, we understand that.
The, the, the serious problem in Long Hill is we've got a lot of lots on steep slopes. If you look at the, uh, south side of Long Hill Road and look at some of those properties, it's incredible. The ridge line is lower than the roadway.
Yeah.
And we need to, again, we need to support property rights as best we can. We can't take away value by saying you cannot build on a lot that you've been paying taxes on. And quite frankly, there's not much left in this town. Uh, not much space left to build on. And so people are now building on more and more marginal lots, either steep slopes or, God, I hate to say the word, wetland.
Closer and closer.
And I, and I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna venture into the wetland floodplain, transition area, uh, hazard area. I don't know enough about it, I leave that to our professionals. I do know, however, that in some cases we are not allowed to exceed the state standards. In some cases, we are not allowed to compromise the state standards. And in some cases, we can do neither, which means we are absolutely a hundred percent locked into the state standard. And so, uh, although you may not like it, eh, quite frankly, this whole business of transition areas leaves me cold. But in, in many cases, we are stuck. And in many cases, we can make compromises, in other cases, we can't. Suffice to say that the whole thing is pretty much out of our jurisdiction right now. Twenty years ago, we were in this same boat with regard to environment. Now, all of a sudden, environment has focused on water. Twenty years from now, it will be focused on climate change. Oh, wait, that's happening now. We've got to put climate change into our, or into our master plan. Because the state has decided in its wisdom that climate change is not something that can be thought of and dealt with at the state level, but rather, eh, that's a municipal problem. So, if anyone wants to help us write the climate change element of the master plan, please, raise your hand. Uh, with regard to height, when all, when all is, uh, they, there are some really weird exceptions. If you have a house on a slope and if you look at it from the street, it's two stories and a couple of dormers coming out of the roof, uh, roof. And it's, uh, whatever height. It's a two and a half story building less than thirty-five feet, fine. In the back, it slopes off and your basement wall is exposed. But it's still a two and a half story building until you cut a door in the basement wall to get out from the playroom into the backyard. Then it suddenly becomes a three and a half story building. It's still the same height as it was before. What if, what if it's a level lot and you just cut a little dent in the turf in order to allow that patio door to open up from the playroom? How does that count for height?
That's what we're saying as the problem.
It's, it's a problem. The, the gross end result of all these gerrymanderings is that the uh, elite property in Gillette that was approved by the planning board at the last meeting, and it wasn't Rich's idea about Eves because Rich didn't work on that one.
He did in the preliminary.
We'll talk. The net result is that the, the ridge line is fifty-nine feet above grade. And it is entirely within the ordinance. Now, was the ordinance gerrymandered? Yeah, but we're seeing more and more of that as we run out of land. we're seeing more and more of that as we run out of land and have housing obligations which are constitutionally mandated, I must remind you. We're going to have to find ways to build higher buildings. With regard to the cell tower issue that came up, it is my bet the next cell tower in town will never come to a board, regardless of how high it is. Because like the cell tower at Public Works, the next cell tower will be built by the town on municipal property, and municipal property does not have to come to a board for approval of its own ordinances, period. So the town can build whatever tower it wants to, anywhere the town owns property, perhaps in the backyard of Old Town Hall.
Perhaps right here.
Reality, property rights, call it what you will. Setbacks, let me talk about setbacks for a minute. Setbacks is going to be discussed at the planning board next week because I am appalled at the setback confusion, and I'm going to start that ball rolling next week. The boards really have, do not have the control that they need over setback, and that's due to the fact that the boards deal with surveys. And surveys show property lines, and property lines don't always match up with reality. We've got rights of way in town that don't match the curb. What's the right setback for a house? Is it so many feet back from the curb, which is the visual impact?
Or the property.
Or is it so many feet back from the front property line or from the center of the street? The board interprets what the surveyor puts in front of them.
Could, how much longer? Because we need to take a break. Our board members are getting a little antsy.
Oh, you can throw me out anytime, Mr. Chairman. It's your meeting.
I understand that.
I'm just trying to educate some of the members of the board here on how we're going to treat this fine document you've put together.
And Dennis, I really do appreciate that because you have a lot of knowledge in that, and we're on the same, we're basically trying to do the same thing. All we're trying to say is, as long as the ordinance is written in a in an understandable comprehensive way, we can enforce it correctly. We just, we're going to make sure that we're enforcing an ordinance the way it's supposed to be.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, we're just giving our opinion.
Our opinion on what we see.
And you, you sure as hell can say no, and you've already said you disagree with something.
I'm not arguing with anything that you have, are about to present. What I'm suggesting is that that I, that maybe there's some things that you want to take away from this meeting that are in progress or that are overwhelmingly complicated.
Yeah, I realize that. And I'm happy that you said that you're considering that downsizing some of those properties.
I told you that last time I came to one of these meetings.
Right, but it doesn't hurt to keep saying it because we keep seeing it. That's...
Well, things take time.
Yeah, I understand.
We, and we don't even take mandatory breaks.
I know.
Just because it's nine o'clock.
I know.
We work right through.
Actually, the next break I'd like to take is adjourning, but...
You're getting paid for a full three hours.
Oh, really? Okay. We appreciate your comments, Dennis, really. And we appreciate the fact that things take longer.
Well, I'm going to defer because you probably got other people who want to make comments.
I hope not. But thank you, Dennis.
I just want to say, Mr. Sandow is correct. It was Paul Ferrera, not Rich Keller.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's fine.
But he knew that.
He knew that. Tell him he was right.
Yes. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to make comments?
Just Dennis, and he already did.
Oh, good. All right.
So we're good.
Any other, what else do we have besides this coming up? Really, nothing, right?
Well...
This was the only thing we had to discuss tonight, is what I mean.
Correct, correct. So this will be on, so the next step for this process will be that I will work with the professionals to revise some of the responses.
Right.
I'll complete the synopsis.
Yeah.
I'll prepare a resolution so we can look over and find out.
And send it out prior, you know, at least a little while prior to...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and we're on the same page. I mean, the planning board, we're on the same page. We just want, so the ordinances either don't conflict in some spots or at least make sense so that however you want to write it, we can sit here and enforce it without scratching our head and wondering how to interpret it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why have we been doing this since 2018?
Well, no, we've done it every year. Just that one said 18 to 20. It was a two-year combined. We do it every year we do this process. And regardless of the planning board's timeline and what they're going to do, if we see it again, we bring it up again. Even though they claim they're working on it, that's fine, and we appreciate that. But if we see that issue again, we have to mention it because we've seen it again. If we don't see the issue, then we don't mention it. So a lot of what we mentioned may be already in the works and it may be already in the pipeline, but at the same time, we've seen it in the year prior. So we mention it, and we say, "Yes, we understand, and we've seen it again." And, you know, maybe you want to just hurry that along so that we don't see it another time. So we do this every year. It's just a way of saying to the, to the, you know, council committee, the ordinances committee, that this is an issue that has to be addressed by our experts to write ordinances that we can, you know, maybe avoid seeing some of this stuff again, that, and avoid, as Dennis said, putting people's property rights and property, what they do with their property in jeopardy or leaving it up to ordinances that we, that are ambiguous. All right, if there's nothing else that we have for this, for the summaries and everything, and there's any other older, new business ever that I know, that we know of?
Not that I have. I will, I'll be sending out to both boards shortly, either tomorrow or next week because I'm away for the rest of the week because of tomorrow afternoon. So I'll be sending out an updated application status that we've gotten several new applications in for the zoning board.
And the next, the 15th is back to Welker?
Correct.
Okay, and he's the only one on there?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. All right, we'll see how that, have you gotten any revised building plans from him?
Not that I received.
There's a whole reason moving to the 15th was so that he could have time to give us the the more beautificate, beautified building that is somewhat...
Oh, yeah, that's right. Wait a minute, April 5th.
Oh, he came back when?
Wait a minute.
April, oh, so who's coming on the 15th?
That's what I had noted.
That's true, I'm sorry. So who's coming on the 15th?
Oh, so the 15th, we have the Greek restaurant, which is 1138 Valley Road, which is Old Mike's Music.
Oh, lovely. That came, that's coming to us?
Yes.
I thought the planning board was going to get that.
Nope.
Oh.
The zoning board gets it. Use variance.
Did you tell them he has to cater that?
I think that would be conflict, but...
Well, hey, come on. So, all right, then, we want to see those plans, you know, ahead of time.
I will send those out, yeah, sure. I think I can send them out if I, if not tomorrow, early next week.
Yeah, well, okay, just get them out as soon as possible because I'd like to see what the heck...
As soon as possible. What?
I was just wondering what they were doing.
Yeah, they're trying to turn that little itty-bitty building into a Greek restaurant. All right, sounds good. All right, knowing that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Okay, we are hereby adjourned at 9:10. Very good. Thank you, Dennis.